All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and their business meeting on December 19th. It will be noted that we've had to cancel our meetings a couple of times because of inclement weather. And that really was done because of the concern over the public getting here. It's one thing for us to crawl up this hill, it's another thing for the public to get here. Appreciate seeing all the people here today. Mr. Crepp will take our roll call.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's a chilly and wet December morning. Glad to be here. So I, we're joined with, from county council, Mr. Chris Story, and then clerk of the board, Mary Rathke. I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Luttrell.
Here, and I might add that Commissioner Schrader is on the phone with us.
Here.
There. All please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to exhale. That's not good.
Well Martha, that was really great. You're a little bit behind with that eastern time. She's on the east coast, it's three hours difference, we might hear the pledge a little later. Now, we have, we always try to get citizens communication on first, and we have some cards up here, I'll bring it up in twos, and Clayton Rhodes and Les Poole.
Hi Chair, this is Clayton Rhodes, I'm from 11602 South Macon Lane, Canby, Oregon. And I am the vice president of the rodeo committee there in Canby, soon to be the president in January, so, I just wanted to come and support your vote on Bob Tversel naming an arena. That guy's done a lot for our county, he's done a lot. So, and I have another group that's talking about maybe making a statue, a bronze statue. So I don't know if that's gonna go in the memorial, Vietnam memorial, or they want to come to the fairgrounds, I don't know where they're gonna put it, but they're working with me on that, where we're gonna go, so you may see me again, I don't know. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you Clayton, that was real nice of you to do that. We have, one of the suggestions I made to the board in this particular naming was for not to exceed 25 years is, you know, we have only a certain amount of buildings and items that we can name after people out there, and after 25 years, you know, or so, it begins to fade on what those people really did, and you have a rejuvenation of people who may have done just as much.
Sure.
So I feel happy about doing that, I know the board supported it completely, so I appreciate you coming by today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Poole.
Good morning, Les Poole. I had a business meeting that got pushed off and ended up happening last night with someone from Woodburn, and we met there in Canby at the illustrious Burgerville, and that's where the Vietnam memorial is. Burgerville's a great company, and it's nice that that memorial's there, and it's always good to hear from people like this gentleman here, and I hope he comes back. I hope a lot of people come back. It's been a long, interesting year for everyone, and, you know, I could certainly reflect until John cut me off, but I won't go there.
What?
Big changes are coming, but yet so much is still the same, and regardless of how we address the upcoming issues, again, many of them are issues that have been with us, really even since before this board convened. I do wanna thank John, I wanna thank John for something. We go back five or six years ago, and anybody that wants to look at some of the video, they'll, they'll see me doing the following, they'll see me pointing out an empty room, and pushing real hard to get evening meetings, and pushing real hard for citizen participation, and pushing real hard for citizens voting on major debt for light rail and issues like that. And the time that John has been here, the meetings have been run well, we've all had our moments, but he's been lenient and good about letting people, if the time allows, to go over three minutes. I can tell you in Damascus, at three minutes and one second, depending on which side of the issue you were on out there, it was time to cut that person off and don't let him finish that sentence. Before John was here, the previous chair, when you were done speaking, you could hear the toilet flush, so to speak, and then the next person came up and they spoke, and their testimony was flushed in the toilet, and that went on and on and on. And things are different now, there's certainly a lot more rapport, the questions, legitimate questions, not little gotcha questions, but legitimate questions and concerns that citizens have, have certainly been better dealt with than in the past. Part of that I also would attribute to our county administrator, who I think's more accessible and responsive than his predecessor. So, as we move forward, I'm hopeful that we don't see a change in the decorum here. I'm hopeful that the new chair does what John did, and that is if there's a commissioner that's got a issue of real concern and they want it on the agenda, it won't require that we have a second commissioner necessarily endorse it to get it on that agenda. It's real important what we see on the agenda and how it's written. And one thing I can promise you is that I will certainly be back next year, and I'll continue to offer what I, what I do, and I hope others show up. By all means, come here, don't be afraid to ask questions, this isn't a courtroom, and by all means, I just invite the public to attend, and keep in mind, the third Thursday, or third meeting of the, of the month is typically in the evening. So, again, I wanna thank everyone for their service, I hope everyone has a great Christmas, and be safe out there, it's still a little dicey in some places.
Thank you Les, appreciate it. My one fan in the back, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And now we have the Moore family, so we'll call you both up, it's Kurt and, oh, Marna, thank you, Marna.
I will sit down in a moment, my name is Marna Elmore, I reside at 18.
Go ahead and have a seat dear, so we can hear you really good.
Is it Marna Elmore? Oh, okay, I usually have a very large voice. All right, my name is Marna Elmore, I reside at 18415 Southeast Wilmot Street, Milwaukee 97267, that's in the Jennings Lodge area. I'm the owner of the property at 17714 Southeast Addie Street, again, Milwaukee 97267. I have a statement, my son has a copy of the statement, we can give to the clerk. I'm 82 years old, my family has owned the property at the Addie Street address, known as Lot 72, since 1930s, since the 1930s. I understand the county is considering whether to take steps that result in the condemnation of part of my property by eminent domain. I strongly oppose this and ask the commissioners not to condemn any part of my property. The property means much to my family, and I wish to preserve and maintain it on behalf of myself, my family, and the memory of my, and honor of my late husband Earl Clifford Moore. On November 21st, 2016, the western boundary of my property, including the fence and plantings that my husband and I put in, was demolished by a business owned and operated by Ms. Jennifer Harding. She had a permit from the county, but she had no right to trespass on my property or damage it in any way. The permit says it did not authorize any trespass, but Harding's construction workers did it anyway. I had no prior notice of this, and could not respond or object until the damage had already been done. I feel incredibly violated by this. To say that I'm in a state of shock and disbelief would be an understatement. I don't really wanna put this in my, well, my existing heart condition has been exasperated by this recent event, and I'm grieving the destruction of parts of my property that were special to me. Please understand, this property has been in the Moore family for 84 years. There are five generations of members that have lived on this property, presently, two of my grandsons live there. When my husband and I personally built that fence and planted shrubs on our property, we did this in order to provide safety, security, and privacy for our family. These needs still exist. In 1988, Ms. Harding asked the county to condemn part of my property that her workers damaged a few weeks ago. She wanted the county to take this land to benefit her private business, the Eastside Athletic Club. At that time, the county wisely refused to do it. And I might add, this is an understatement, my husband and I had no idea that this action, this is the first I had ever noticed of it, known of it, now, when we researched this. The only thing that has changed since then is that Harding has now committed malicious trespass that has damaged the property. If the county proceeds to condemn the part of my property that Harding damaged, it will be rewarding her for her wrongful and unlawful acts. It will be taking private property from my family to benefit Ms. Harding's private business, which is not what the power of eminent domain is supposed to be used for. As owners of the land, we expect the county to protect and preserve our property rights against intruders, not to reward them for breaking the law. Harding has already violated my rights, my dignity, and some of the precious memories of my husband by taking parts of the property from me. I ask the county commissioners to please consider the pain she's already caused me, and the additional pain it will cause if more of my property is taken from me. All I want to do is restore my damaged property to as close to what it was before Harding's trespass, so that my family can enjoy it in peace. Please, commissioners, Chairman Luttrell, Bernard, Savis, Smith, and Martha Schrader, think about how you would want to be treated in this situation. I beg you to do the right thing out of respect, integrity, and justice, and not take away any more of my family's property. I wanna thank you very much for your time and your attention and consideration, and may the Lord grant you wisdom and guidance in your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am.
That's the copy, I wanna give the clerk right there, please.
Okay.
You have the other one there.
Sir, will you be testifying too?
I'm just here in support of my mom, Kurt Moore, I live in Oregon City. I just had a couple things. When we learned of this, and we went to the county on Monday to ask them, to tell them we hadn't been notified, no ability to respond, and we asked them to stop work, and they said no, and it wasn't until the work was done, and the trees been ripped out, and the fence had been ripped out, that the county admitted they had no right to issue the permit. So, the condemnation proceedings really seem, like my mom says, devastating. So I would ask you please, all of you, what if it was your mom, and what if it was your property this happened to? And that's it for me.
Thank you. Well, was it Dan Johnson or Mr. Bezner, somebody better come up so we can have a brief chat about this. Our understanding is that it is necessary to provide sidewalks in that particular area. And we also heard that, yes, that, that there was an assumption made, unfortunately, that that was right-of-way property, and wasn't private property. Mr. Bezner.
So Mike Bezner, Assistant Director of Transportation, most of what the Moores just said, I, I agree with timeline-wise, pretty accurate. I, I would say that when, when Kurt first contacted me, I think the work, I think the arbor Vitae and the fence had already been removed, and the work isn't completely finished, we did stop work prior to them paving. I think that's the only thing that I would say might be different in the time.
But what are they building there, Mike?
They were widening the road by about seven feet, not to put sidewalks in, but to put a wider paving area down, so that there's an area for people to walk. This is Addie Street, the rest of the road is, got a 50-foot right-of-way. This actually goes back about 100 years, back to when it was first platted. The rest of the road was platted at, at the 50 feet, I believe, but this one section, for some reason, it was missing from the plat. In the, in the 1940s, the county commissioners declared it a 50-foot right-of-way. So this, this has been going on, certainly for a very, very long time. Looking at the evidence, it is less clear, when, we don't have something to back up what the commissioners did in the 40s. And so, in, in light of all of that, we figured that, since the rest of the road is a 50-foot right-of-way, that this would be the time to clean it up. The improvements are not completed, it didn't actually get paved. And the widening is, the impact is about, I wanna say it is about eight feet onto the frontage of the Moore's property.
Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Yes, Mrs. Moore, Marna Elmore, correct, thank you for your very heartfelt testimony. I find these condemnations by government or private property to be very messy, and I don't like them.
I'm sorry, you missed me, I have, I'm an 18-year-old lady.
Wait.
I'm hearing you talk, please.
Yeah, just let me finish talking, okay? All right. Because we can't hear you unless you're at the microphone.
Okay.
Okay. I find condemnations of private property to be messy, and I don't like them, I have never liked them. One of my basic philosophies and tenets as a, as a private citizen and elected official is that, you know, government really should not condemn private property. However, I, I do want to say some things for the record that I think are very important. I'd like the camera to zoom in on this photo that we were provided in executive session, can you folks see that? And the property in question is this strip, and it looks like it belongs on the public roadway. And as Mr. Bezner said, it's about seven feet wide, and it runs along the length of the property, about 100 feet, is that right, Mike?
Yeah.
And I can understand very much how this mistake, if you wanna call it a mistake, could have been made on the county's part by issuing a permit to allow whatever happened on this utilities to happen. Also, you can see by that picture on either side of where the new gravel is, a sidewalk that goes through, and people used to walk along there, now they can't, because it has been roped off by the property owners, and now people who would walk and jog along that road have to go out into traffic to get around, and that does pose a safety and health problem. Sir, just let me finish, just settle down, just grab yourself by your emotions, okay? No, just, I'm just trying to explain how it was presented to me, I was not made aware of this, nor maybe the other commissioners, until last week in an executive session. And so, yeah, I think because of title, all the legal mess, it was assumed that the county was in the right legal frame to do this. Yes, it's, it's a mess, and I apologize to the landowners, but I would submit to the landowners, after Mrs. Moore's very heartfelt testimony and the history of this property, that they will not be harmed if the county takes this, in that they can still use their property at 100% of what it's being currently used at now. And that is the gauge that I am going to use today in voting in favor of this condemnation, because I do not feel, and I do not think, based on the facts that were presented to me at the time, that there's any degradation of your private property rights if we, if the county was to take this, pave it over, make, make a sidewalk, or do whatever. I understand the deep feelings, I don't know who told what, when, I don't know, I don't know a lot of things that happened with this. But there are rare instances in, in history where government had to take private property, and I will cite one very important, very important things, my husband works for the Bonneville Power Administration. And in order to get electricity to our rural areas in Oregon, the federal government had to condemn private property in order to run power lines. At that very explosive time in the 1930s and 40s, I know of people who hated the fact that Bonneville Power Administration came in and took their property so they could run electricity to the rural areas. Now, moving forward to today, we take electricity for granted in the fact that we have power lines running over right-of-way, we don't even think about it, it's like the air we breathe. And so this is not anything new to private property ownership, it is not anything new to governments' actions where people think that have been aggrieved. I don't personally think that the use of the property has been aggrieved, yes, there is a strip, yes, you should be compensated for it, I think there will be an allowance for that, county council's probably back in the room there saying, oh my god, Commissioner Smith, yes, you should be aggrieved. And to me, the argument that I made in, in our executive session was this, I said, okay, first of all, yeah, we screwed up, we are gonna have to pay these people, and then the remedy for the payment is condemnation on top of it? I says, you've got to be kidding me. The whole procedure and how this thing came about astounded me, but as an elected official, I am left today with a vote. And that vote, I will be in favor of this, and the next board, coming back in January, will have to deal with it. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, normally, a condemnation occurs after an effort is made to compensate for the property, correct?
Yeah, and the resolution simply authorizes the public need, it does not preclude the same process we go through with every other, where there's an appraisal, and an offer, and a 40-day, it, it doesn't mean we're going to be going to condemnation, except if, if we can't negotiate.
Yeah, so as Mayor of Milwaukee, and the widening of McLaughlin, I'm semi-familiar with the fact that this occurs occasionally, and at the time, the cash pot threatened to sue us, the city of Milwaukee, and we negotiated a deal with them, and ended up buying the property. So, you know, while I understand the problem, the, the need is that we have made an effort to try and discuss compensation without success, correct?
On a limited basis, so far, yes. But, it, what I'm saying is that that would still be ongoing in this process, you know.
Yeah, so from here out, it's a discussion about what's it worth, and what will you take, and, and they'll hire somebody to praise it, and then you'll come up with a figure that, hopefully, all people think is fair. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and that'll come up later on the consent agenda. Now Mary, did you?
I was hoping to correct a couple things, is that possible?
We don't usually allow rebuttal, frankly.
Well, there's so much that's wrong. I spoke to Mike on Monday.
I, hold on, hold on, you might as well come up. Let's, let's do it short here, though, we've got a long day.
I spoke to Doug and Don, yeah, on Monday with my mom, after they had cut the driveway and the pavement out, and we asked them to stop work on Monday. We also asked them to stop work on Tuesday, and I talked to Mike, and said they were gonna have a meeting about it, we'll figure out, but we can't do it. Work was not stopped, I was not told that, they had no basis for the permit until 1:30 on Wednesday, that was after all the preparation been done for paving. You showed the picture, Ms. Smith, about the roped-off area, that was put there over county concerns of safety, because there's a four-inch drop, and they were worried about people tripping. And the fence that was there allowed plenty of room for people to walk by. And this isn't for utilities, it's for Eastside Athletic Club, and to bail the county out if you go ahead with condemnation, at least this resolution, that's my feeling on it.
Parking, parking, there's no parking, there's never been any.
Yeah, we, we recognize it, yeah, it, it, yeah, I got that part, the.
One more thing, I, I have a feeling the reason why they're pushing this onto my mom's property is because Pete's Lair is actually built into the easement on the west side of the street. Addie Street is shown on every plat as being a straight street, it's not actually a straight street, it makes a jog to the east.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard.
So, one other question, so a survey was done, correct? And the survey didn't indicate that there wasn't, there was an issue with the right-of-way?
The applicant had hired a surveyor who, who did the survey, and that's what their study showed.
Okay, thank you.
And to add to the point, we're still with this resolution, we're stating the necessity of resolving the situation, we're identifying that there's been an open question regarding the ownership of this property, well, for over 80 years. And it's our recommendation that we get clarity on that point, so we can provide for safe and appropriate public transportation and access. This has been lingering for a while, you know, sometimes those skeletons jump out of the closet when they're not your fault, this is just one of those that we, we're trying to deal with and clean up.
Well, I will say, as a real estate broker, you know, we always used to do what's called a trio on the property, which included the map, legal description, tax information, et cetera. Very disappointed that a surveyor wouldn't recognize that, oh, by the way, the county doesn't own this portion, I mean, I don't know who they hired, and that's fine, but we should never hire that person. Commissioner Savis.
Well, due to the weather and our December 15.
Turn your thing on.
Our December 15 meeting being canceled, I got out of most of my commitments, but I need to leave here shortly for a commitment I couldn't cancel, so this, this meeting, the fact that it's scheduled here today, I, I can't stick around. But I did wanna say, I'm very familiar with the area, I had a business across the street, I think one of the issues, I think, is safety in this regard, that even on McLaughlin, if you go just to the, to the other side of Pete's Lair on McLaughlin, there are no sidewalks, it's one of those areas where the topography is such that there is no safe passage for any pedestrian. Now, north of that, there are sidewalks, and south of it, a couple properties over, there are sidewalks, but, because of that, so what happens is some people that wanna walk, kids included, kids that would need to get to the bus stop, because there's lots of homes and apartments and condos that are on Boardman Avenue, and also along Addie, that there is a, a safe passage, if you look at the picture that Commissioner Smith held up there, just imagine two cars crossing at the same time with par, cars parked on there, that there is no safe passage for pedestrians. So I think our issue is pedestrian access. Now, that's gonna serve all kinds of people, not just patrons of Eastside Athletic. So for safety concerns, I think we're starting a process, we're not actually condemning the problem, we're opening a process, so hopefully we negotiate a solution here, and I think that's what we're authorized in today, I just wanted to say that, that it's a process we're starting, we're not actually condemning the property here today. And with that, my colleagues.
Correct. Your excuse, Commissioner Savis, thank you for hanging around. We had a late entry into the citizens communication, somebody used to come quite a bit more, but it's Cindy Lewis-Wolfram. Lewis-Wolfram.
We're on Citizens Communication, right?
Correct.
All good. I come in here today to say a thank you from the Clackamas CPO to two of its members who left us earlier this year during the end of the summer months. Unfortunately, that's what happens in a CPO. You get good people who come and share their talents with you, and then they have to move on. But our CPO has kind of taken a bit of a hit because these two people have been very conscientious citizens and worked very, very hard for the issues that face us over the years. And I would ask that if you have a chance this year, and you've worked with either Barbara Kemper or Pat Russell, you think of them and send them a card, because they have worked enormously for this county. And while the CPO does appreciate them a lot, it would be nice occasionally if the folks at the county that they've had to work with knows what's happened with them. So if you need their address, give me a call. And thank you for working so carefully with them over the years.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right. We're moving on to public hearings. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We do have two public hearings this morning. The first involves two board orders that would dissolve the hamlet of Malala Prairie and the villages at Mount Hood. Mr. Jeff Muns is here to provide the staff report and recommendations for these.
Which public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Krupp. We have two proposed orders for your consideration today regarding the hamlet of Malala Prairie and the villages at Mount Hood. We had a number of public hearings regarding this over the past several months, as well as some discussion regarding this matter, as we went through the amendment to the county code recently. But for your consideration, there are some draft orders, as well as our staff report for your review. When we amended the code recently, you now have a new process to consider whether the dissolving these two bodies. One is by an order today based upon the three factors contained in the county code, but essentially, it's whether it's in the best interest of the citizens, whether the board members failed to regularly follow the adopted bylaws, and whether the board members failed to meet the requirements of Chapter 2.10 of the county code.
All right. Commissioners, you have any questions, clarifications needed?
No.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to testify on this item.
We have two cards.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Lespool, Ms. Cindy Lewis-Wolfram.
Good morning again, Lespool. Got a lot of mixed feelings about this subject. And I think back to Damascus, you know. Well, things aren't going well. There's a lot of personality conflicts going on. People get at loggerheads. And in any governance, no matter how big or small, it can get testy. It can lead to failure. It can lead to a lot of confusion in the general citizen's perception of what's going on. And my concern is that if one says, "Let's dissolve this village. Let's dissolve this hamlet as well," the question, of course, is what next? And I'll use Damascus because it's a bigger example. What next in Damascus? Well, here's what I heard over and over from folks, and you're going to hear it. Well, let the county take care of it. Great. Yeah, let's dump more on the county. Let's give you more to do. Let's spread you thinner, and let's remove that local voice, or some of that local voice, because it hasn't worked out till now, or we've reached loggerheads. And regardless of what the issue is, whether it's Mount Hood Village, whether we're talking about Malino Prairie, you know, the Malala Prairie, excuse me, the point I'm trying to make is that when in frustration, we eliminate something that so much went into, because of the current situation, where are we going to be in a couple of years? Where will that local voice be? Right now, again, in Damascus, there is no Damascus. Is there a CPO in Damascus? Well, not really. What's going on in Damascus? If you walked out to Damascus, I don't mean walked, drove out, and walked up to a few doors like I have, and you talk to folks, you'll find out there's certain people that got notions about what should happen. And a lot of folks think, "Well, the city's gone, and now we're going to go back to being a community, and nothing's going to change." And of course, that's totally unrealistic. So I'm very concerned about where are we going to be when dissolving these two entities, and how will citizen involvement and that local voice operate? Do we have any options for the future? And indeed, if you dissolve these two entities, would there be a timeframe when possibly we would see them come back? In other words, we get down the road, maybe things are smoother and better, and there's an opportunity to create similar bodies, especially on Mount Hood, because there's a lot going on up there. A lot of potential on Mount Hood and a lot going on. So I tend to say this is not the way to go. And unless I could see some better direction in the future, or where we're going to be six months from now, I would be opposed to this. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, first off, there's a very active CPO in that community, and a commitment on the part of the commission to continue to communicate with that CPO, which is actually looking at taking over an inactive CPO. And this is not the mountain. There's still a mountain CPO, which is very active. But I attended a meeting where the entire meeting was about a logo. I mean, it was getting nowhere, about the order of names in the logo. So I would say that, you know, there is nothing that says that this group can't come back and start reforming any of these groups anytime in the future. The difference in Damascus, too, is that now the citizens can again decide what to do. They could create a city. They could create a village or a hamlet. They can create an active CPO. All those things are open to them. And so when you hear voices about what they would like to do, I've heard that people are looking at a city again, in a different-sized city. So there's a lot of discussions going on out there. But anyone's open to bringing this back in the future.
I appreciate that. And of course, what's happening in Damascus now is a far cry from what should be happening in terms of, there's a lot of interests out there, and Happy Valley is understandably annexing the parts it wants, and the rest of the community is kind of in no man's land. I appreciate your time, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you probably saw on my card, my position on this particular resolution is rather questionable for me. Yes or no? And I think that the biggest thing that I'm having a problem with right now is optics. It makes our county look bad to especially do this type of an operation during Christmas week or holiday week. The last two weeks, I know that that's been because your timing was bad. Sorry, but you didn't ask for the weather? But it's been bad. And I would ask you to consider postponing this again because of that. You don't have a full board here, and you don't have perhaps everyone who would like to be speaking to this because of the timing. I've read over some of the things that've been going on, so I understand some of what's going on. They're not my CPOs, but we have to keep track of what you all are doing so we can make sure our CPOs can at least make good suggestions. But for a lot of people, this is city government for them, the closest they're going to get to it. It's not, but it's the closest they're going to get to it if they don't come and take part here by sharing with you. I would ask that you give them the chance to at least participate in this, and listen and share with you how they feel, not in the midst of a holiday season, even though I know it was meant for two weeks ago. But just to give them a chance to have their say.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
So this is six months or a year. It certainly has not happened in the last two weeks. We made every effort to resolve this in another way, every effort. We all attended those meetings and made every effort. John, myself, and Paul, and I believe Martha, and you, we all went to resolve this. So this is not something that occurred in the last two weeks. It's been quite some challenge. I have mixed feelings, too. Not so much about the villages at Mount Hood, but the hamlet of Malala Prairie. But again, they can come back. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. We'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board orders dissolving the hamlet of Malala Prairie and the villages at Mount Hood.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. You know, I often say about the grand plan of Senate Bill 100, you know, ostensibly, you would think this is a great idea. We're going to get control of certain lands. We're going to tell people what they can do. And it was heralded many years ago in the '70s that this idea of zoning every piece of property in our state is going to... Kill that mouse, will you?
Martha, oh, that's my...
Martha? Well, all right. They had that to say about my words. But, you know, no other state adopted this idea. Let's zone every piece of property. No other state did it, yet it was said 30 years ago, "Oh, my gosh, this is going to be the next wave of things to hit us." Now, here we are, the only county with hamlets and villages, the only one. And that was started many years ago. Did people run and say, "My gosh, this is a great idea. Let's all do this?" No. And we've had our problems, certainly the Malala Hamlet Prairie, and now this one. And this commission in the future, let alone in the near past, has not been trying to off these organizations. We've been trying to support them. And to a great extent, money has been expended through public and government affairs, lots of money, to help support these organizations. Certainly, I think that it's a great success in Stafford, Beaver Creek, and others. Mount Hood, Government Camp is doing quite well. But, you know, there comes a time when it gets so out of line, and especially some of the letters that were sent to me and this commission. Vitriolic anger and spew is the best way I can describe it. And that is not, that's not the way to get along. And you've never heard that from me or any of these commissioners. But certain individuals up in this particular one have taken upon themselves to attack the very county that feeds them. And so it's time for them to go bye-bye for a while, and that's exactly what we'll do today. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Malala, there's also a Malala CPO. There's also a hamlet of Malina, which is right next door, and then the hamlet of Beaver Creek. Is it hamlet or CPO? I don't remember. One of the two.
It's a hamlet.
Yeah, it's a hamlet. So it's not that these people will go unrepresented. That's not it at all. You know, government exists, I think, to serve the people. And when the useful life of a program runs out, I think it's incumbent upon our elected officials to say, "Okay, let's get rid of it." I think we pass too many laws in this country. I think we pass too many laws, really, at the county level, the legislative level. And let's start taking some stuff off the books that no longer works. And I think that's what certainly we're doing today.
Are we ready for the question? Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. Thank you. Mr. Krupp?
Okay, the second public hearing we have involves a resolution for the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget. And I'll invite Diane Padilla, our budget manager, up to give a short presentation to you on this item.
Yes, I'm here this morning to request approval of a supplemental budget of greater than 10 percent for fiscal year 16, 17, in deference to time, because I know we do have a double agenda today. Although I'm happy to go through the details, fund by fund, if you'd prefer, but I think I can also summarize it by saying the theme of the day is trueing up budgets. We're able to true up beginning fund balances now that we know the actual, rather than what they had to be adopted at, which was a projection. We can recognize which year, which end of the fiscal year capital projects fell on, and we can recognize the latest in grant awards. And so that's the gist of what we're asking to do this morning.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on these alterations.
No cards.
What? Doesn't mean they can't come up. Close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move we approve the resolution for a Clackamas County Supplemental Budget greater than 10 percent and budget reductions for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
I motion by Commissioner Bernard, and second by Commissioner Smurth...
Smurf.
Smurf? Oh...
I've never been called a smurf before.
And any further discussion on the smurf of this thing? All right. Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. I want to announce the board will recess as the County Board of Commissioners and convene as a Development Agency of Clackamas County for the next item.
Okay, so this is a public hearing to consider the first reading of an ordinance that would amend the Clackamas Town Center Area Development Plan. And we have Mr. Dan Johnson and Dave Quiner from the Development Agency here to present the report to you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Board. Dan Johnson, development, actually Assistant Director of Department of Transportation and Development. I'm joined here by Dave Quiner from the Development Agency. Thank you for the time this morning. I want to hearken back to 2013, where we had a lot of discussion with the Board of County Commissioners regarding the Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal District. And the Board gave us very clear direction as a part of that discussion. And that discussion, as a vital part of that discussion, was the dialogue around direct investments. So direct investments with our partnering overlapping taxing districts. We are here to do an amendment to the Town Center Urban Renewal Plan to facilitate the last of those four districts you asked us to partner with. If you recall, Clackamas County Fire District, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, and North Clackamas School District. We're here for an amendment to support the school district. All those other agreements for those other three entities have already been executed. We're moving forward with projects supporting their work. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Dave Quiner, and he can kind of roll through the nuances of this amendment we're putting forward today and outline how it's going to help the school district move forward with their objectives.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Quiner, Program Supervisor with the Development Agency. As Dan mentioned, we've been working with the North Clackamas School District to identify a project that we could assist with in funding with our renewable funds. The school district identified the Mount Scott Elementary School as our highest priority for those needed improvements. And while this school is within our urban renewal district boundary and is within the plan goals, it is actually not an identified project within the plan. So with that not being an identified project, it requires an amendment to the plan. The Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal Plan states that in addition of a new project, performs a substantially different function from any project, activity, or program specified in the plan, and that is estimated to cost in excess of $500,000 will be a substantial amendment to that plan. As this project is not identified in the plan and is in excess of $500,000, it is deemed a substantial amendment. Funding for this project is coming from already accumulated tax increment funds for the Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal Area. No... No additional tax increment funds are being taken from the district since it was closed for tax increment collections in 2013. The statute requires that any amendment to the plan is done so in the same fashion that the plan was adopted. As such, this amendment was presented to the Planning Commission on November 14th, and they've recommended approval of the amendment. In addition, the proceedings have been published in the local newspapers required by statute. With that, I respectfully request approval of the ordinance amending the Clackamas Town Center Urban, Clackamas Town Center Area Development Plan and Report. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a question and I have a comment. How much and what will this be used for in the Clackamas School District?
The amount of funding we've allocated to the project is $2.5 million. The estimated project cost right now is about $2.6 million. This will be adding four classrooms to the school. It will also be upgrading the cafeteria, kitchen area, providing some ADA upgrades as well to the school district.
It's also important to note, I don't believe these, the school district's going through a bonding process recently, and in our discussions, they did not include these projects on that bond list, so they were separate from that.
This was separate. Thanks for the clarification, Dan. I just want to say, in 2012, voters of Clackamas County said no more to this type of financing, if you want to call it that. And Urban Renewal, TIF, which is Tax Increment Financing, assumes, I think, for a lot of people, it's new money being created for projects that government deems valuable. It is not new money. It is money taken from one pocket and put into another pocket, because we do, as taxpayers, have a limited amount of money that we pay in. This money is given back to the school district, because over the last decades and decades, it was money taken away from the school district. And as one of the commissioners that was voted for and came in on this, we made sure that we ended the Clackamas County Urban Renewal District, and the money that's being allocated for this project and the three others previously mentioned was leftover money that had not been spent, and that we, as a commission, said, okay, that needs to go back to who originally paid it. And I think putting money back into a school district for their specific use is a very, very good, wise, it's a wise investment for the future.
Thank you for your presentation. Let's see, we are gonna have a public hearing on this, so any more clarification necessary? Open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing, ask for a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion?
I just want to add that, you know, we were talking about closing this Clackamas Town Center District for a long time, and this discussion's been going on for years about what to do with the money. And I, it's one of the things that you brought forward and appreciate, that the school districts and other fire districts, and can't tell you all the others. Parks District, that money did go back into those investments, so I think that's something you should be proud of.
Well, thank you. You know, we did come into this, I was kind of surprised, it was told to me it wasn't surplus money, but it was money, $48 million in the Clackamas Regional Center after 33 years of pulling that money for development purposes from schools, police, fire, library, et cetera. And one of the things we were able to carve out was that $9 million would be returned to parks, fire, police, and schools. This is a kind of a correction of sorts, in that it is necessary, and believe me, I'm not an urban renewal advocate, anybody's listened to me the last four years, it is a correction necessary to bring that area in where this particular school is, to be able to help the school district. Now, if you ever want to know a little bit about urban renewal, look up Redevelopment Agency in California. They had these, and they quit them. Because finally, and I just can never believe, especially the fire district, in some of these districts, losing a truck or two, the cost of a truck or two, every year. It is said that without urban renewal, this area wouldn't develop. Town Center, it's on 205. It would have developed in its own time, and all that money that's been paid, I'm talking about tens and even hundreds of millions of dollars, would have been paid to those important entities, schools, police, fire, libraries. So I understand the legislature is gonna take some even harder approach to urban renewal coming up, and it's because, finally, again, the fire district, the school district, and the police are going, my God, this is killing us. We're losing hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars a year. And I'm glad they're gonna approach that and tighten up the reins of urban renewal. Any further discussion? All right.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. Now I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, and I'm going to assign the number at the second reading, so it reflects the year that we approve it. So this is amending the Clackamas Town Center Area Development Plan and Report.
Well, that was long, wasn't it? Okay. Any further discussion? Do commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? I'll announce that the second reading will be on Thursday, January 12th, 2017, at the regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Development Agency of Clackamas County and convene as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County for the next item. And I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by Title.
Okay, there's two items on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval of a Bond Inducement Resolution declaring the Housing Authority of Clackamas County intent to issue revenue bonds for the development of the Rosewood Terrace Apartment Project, and in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2016.
All right. The commissioners want to remove any of those items? Now, just so everybody knows, with the Housing Authority, it's actually six commissioners. The five that are sitting in county commissioners, Mr. Paul Reynolds, who's one of the tenants at one of the housing developments, Paul is unable to attend, and the other Paul had to leave. By code, we have to have four positive votes, not like a normal commission meeting here, where you need three positive votes getting worked on. This one needs four. So I appreciate that Commissioner Schrader has decided to stay on the phone with us, because minimum, we need all of them to approve this item. All right, ask for the motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board reconvene as the County Board of Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And Mr. Krip?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have two land use ordinance items. The first is the adoption of Zoning and Development Ordinance Number 258, which involves amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance to implement the Clackamas Regional Center Connections Project. And I'll ask Mr. Nate Boderman from County Council to talk to this item.
Good morning, commissioners. Assistant County Councilman Nate Boderman, we have two items for you this morning. For item number one, staff is recommending adoption of an ordinance to implement the previously approved ZDO 258 proposal, which relates to the Clackamas Regional Center Connections Project. This project has specifically identified several new capital transportation projects which identify improvements to crossings, safety, bikeway, and pedestrian system. Specifically, this ordinance would amend Chapters 5 and 10 of the county's Comprehensive Plan and Sections 202, 1007, and 1202 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 25th, 2016, and recommended approval of staff's recommendation with one change, which is described in the staff report materials provided to you. The Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on September 21st, 2016, and by a vote of four zero, orally approved ZDO 258 at that time as recommended by the Planning Commission. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision made on September 21st, 2016, and to make final quality control edits for formatting and consistency purposes. Staff's recommendation that you approve this ordinance, the materials which have been provided before you today.
All right, commissioners, have any clarifying questions? All right, ask for the motion.
I move we read ZDO 258 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Smith. Any further questions? All right, go ahead, Mary.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll ask the clerk to read ZDO 258 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 258, and ordinance amending Chapter 5 and 10 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Sections 202, 1007, and 1202 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
All right, the motion?
I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance 258, amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance to implement the Clackamas Regional Center Connections Project, as previously approved at the September 21st meeting, 2016 Land Use Hearing.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Mr. Krip, that passes four zero. Let's see about the next one.
So the second item, again, is a reading and adoption of Zoning and Development Ordinance Number 260. This involves amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to adopt the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bikeway Implementation Plan. And again, Mr. Nate Boderman will present this item to you.
Thank you. For item number two, staff is recommending adoption of an ordinance to implement the previously approved ZDO 260 proposal, which relates to the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bikeway Implementation Plan. This project has identified several new capital transportation projects which address improvements to crossing, safety, bikeways, and the pedestrian system, and contains updates to a number of policies in the Mount Hood Community Plan and the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan, directed towards things such as identifying pedestrian and bicycle needs in the area, developing safe routes to schools, identifying locations for additional or enhanced pedestrian crossings on Highway 26, and evaluating the feasibility of a multi-use pathway. Specifically, this ordinance would amend Chapters 5 and 10 and Appendix B of the county's Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 14th, 2016, and voted six zero to recommend approval of staff's recommendation. The Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on December 7th, 2016, and by a vote of five zero, orally approved ZDO 260 as recommended by the Planning Commission with two amendments. One amendment to elevate the priority of Project 4073 related to improvements to Highway 26, and the other amendment to change a reference from village districts to village areas. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision made on December 7th, 2016, and to make those final quality control edits for formatting and consistency purposes. Certainly, staff's recommendation that you approve the ordinance materials before you today.
I might note that for those of you who wonder, does it really make a difference for you to come forward and talk to us? It does. It's happened in Budget Committee, and Mr. Steve Graper's sitting out here, who came forward with those two amendments, which we said that we'd be fine with. So, you know, squeaky wheel gets grease, but the wheel that's silent gets nothing. So I appreciate that people would come before us and ask us to change minor things, and so your testimony does make a difference. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, since previously we dissolved the villages, do we want to take off Villages At and call it Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bicycle Implementation Plan? Would that require a lot of effort?
What do you say, Nate?
I probably am not the right person to ask on this. Looking back at Karen, she did most of the drafting and implementation on this, so let's, if you'll give us just a moment.
ODOT was involved in this, too, so they may have it...
They could remove Villages At, those two words.
So I think that that particular reference is in the plan that is adopted as Appendix B. Specifically with your point that the work that was done with ODOT was a separate document. Okay, so this, making that change wouldn't change anything with ODOT. But we can change the title as reference, but my one concern would be, and I'd have to look at it closely with respect to whether or not we reference it in any of the words within the Comprehensive Plan. So it could cause us to go back and make additional changes if there are references to that particular plan. I don't know if that's necessary, though, because the work with the title, the villages, did not imply specifically that reference that you guys just made that change to. So I think it's kind of complicated.
Commissioner Smith?
Since we just had a previous vote to dissolve the Villages at Mount Hood, am I correct, Mr. Story, in thinking that that is not final until the order is signed by our chair?
It will go into effect upon the ordinance, the order being adopted. Now, the order typically is signed the same day, so I think it will have an effective date of today.
So it's not in effect until it's signed by today, and it's not signed yet. So I think that we should err on the side of caution and leave the language in Villages at Mount Hood. And it's just referenced by name only, it does not assume that that organization, it's just a name, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that you will not experience any harm by leaving the name in, if that's your concern.
That would be my preference, Board.
Commissioner Bernard?
I agree with that. I mean, we can always go back and change it later. Thanks.
All right, how about a motion?
I move we read ZDO 260 by title. No, we already did that, right? No, we did not do that. Okay, I will say that again. I move we read ZDO 260 by title only.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll ask the clerk to read ZDO 260 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 260, and ordinance amending Chapter 5 and 10 and Appendix B of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan.
All right. I'll ask for a motion.
I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance 260 amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to adopt the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bikeway Implementation Plan as previously approved at December 7th, 2016 Land Use Hearing.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. Thank you. All right, it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives for Emergency Shelter. Approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with the Inn for Shelter for Displaced Youth. Approval of Amendment Number Two to a Professional Service Agreement with Bridges to Change for Providing Mentor Services for the County's Adult Drug Court Program. Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Comp Health Locum Tennis for Temporary Physician Staff. Approval of Amendment Number Eleven to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon Acting by and Through Its Oregon Health Authority for Operation as the Local Public Health Authority for Clackamas County. Approval of a Grant Award from Oregon Liquor Control Commission and National Alcohol Beverage Control Association for the Responsible Hospitality Toolkit. Approval of an Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with North Clackamas School District for Teen Mentor Program. Approval of a Professional Technical and Consultant Service Agreement with Youth Move Oregon to Assist Youth, Young Adults in Transition. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Malala and the Housing and Community Development Division for the Lola Avenue Improvement Project. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Shelter from Domestic Violence. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, Oregon Insurance Division Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance. Approval of a renewal of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services Senior Health Insurance Benefit Assistance. Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with Health Shares for Oregon, of Oregon for Chronic Disease Prevention Program. Under elected official... Under-Elected Official Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. And Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Transportation and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for the Snow Park Parking Permit Enforcement. Under County Council Approval of a Conveyance of Former City of Damascus Parkland to North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. And Under Technology Services Approval of an ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement Contract Number Three Five Seven Four One Six with the Oregon Department of Revenue for Digital GIS Tax Lot Conversion. Under Business and Community Services, a resolution naming the Clackamas County Fairgrounds Rodeo Arena in honor of Mr. Bob Traversal as the Traversal Arena. Approval of a contract with Siseries Corporation for the Radio Frequency Identification Goods and Services. And Approval of the Contract Amendment Number One for the Contract Renewal with the Coraggio Group for Strategic Planning and Project Management Consulting Services. And now I'm turning it over to Dawn, because this is a long one.
Yeah, so we're practicing our vocal cords together here. I've got Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution supporting the Oregon Department of Transportation Resolution and application for a fast lane grant for the I-205 Abernathy Bridge. Approval of Amendment Number One with DKS Associates for On-Call Traffic Engineering Services, two thousand sixteen through two thousand and nineteen. Approval of Contract Amendment Number One with Kittleson and Associates Incorporated for On-Call Traffic Engineering Services, two thousand sixteen through two thousand nineteen. A Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Right-of-Way for Addy Street Safety Improvements Authorizing Negotiations and Eminent Domain Actions. Approval of a, excuse me, for the Finance Department, Approval of a Resolution for a Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Less Than Ten Percent for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. Approval of a Resolution for Clackamas County for Budgeting of New Specific Purpose Revenue for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. Approval of a Resolution for a Clackamas County for Transfer of Appropriations for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. Next is Administration, an Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County and the C-800 Radio Group Regarding Public Safety Radio System Replacement Project Bond Funding. Now, for the Library District of Clackamas County, a Resolution Approving a Supplemental Budget for the Library Service District of Clackamas County Less Than Ten Percent for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. For the Enhanced Law Enforcement District, Approval of a Resolution for an Enhanced Law Enforcement District Supplemental Budget Less Than Ten Percent for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. And now for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, a Resolution Approving a Supplemental Budget for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Less Than Ten Percent for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. Acceptance of a Public Pedestrian and Maintenance Easement between Marquom Heights Homeowners Association and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Acceptance of Former City of Damascus Parkland from Clackamas County. And now for Water Environment Services, we have Approval of a Managing Oregon Resources Efficiently, otherwise known as MORE, Intergovernmental Agreement for Sharing Resources and Services for Clackamas County Service District Number One. Approval of a MORE Intergovernmental Agreement for Sharing Resources and Services for Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County. And Approval of a MORE Intergovernmental Agreement for Sharing Resources and Services for Clackamas County Water Environment Services. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract Documents with West Consultants Incorporated to Provide Comprehensive Stream Flow Monitoring, excuse me, Monitoring for Clackamas County Service District Number One Procurement. And Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract Documents with Brown and Caldwell Incorporated to Provide Consulting Services for the Clackamas County Service District Number One Kellogg Creek Wastewater Pollution Control Plant Improvements Project Procurement. And that is the consent agenda. And boy, we are both really tired.
Yeah, I just can't wait to sign all these things after we're done with them. All right, commissioners, you want to pull any of these items? I don't see any motion then.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. And now with all the snow days, understand when I cancel the public meetings, it doesn't mean that the county closes. That's Mr. Krupp's job, and he's been, what was it, last week? He has this very interesting little, I call it a leaping road. What was that, Martha? Has this small car that he drives quite adroitly, and he made it up here and he Facebooked it at four AM, they were checking out the county offices to see if they should open that day. So, it's been a little bit of a struggle over the past week and a week and a half, and he also always has some very interesting and uplifting news for us. I'm sure it's the same today.
Yeah, so I have always checked out the roads personally for myself when making the call as to whether or not to close county operations or delay opening of county operations. It gives me a better assurance by actually getting a feel myself to see how things actually go, and plus, I want to make sure I can make it in to the county offices as well, so. Well, this is the last official regular business meeting of the year. It's also the final regular business meeting for Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Smith, and I just wanted to take a few words to thank you for giving me the opportunity and the honor to be able to serve for you here with Clackamas County. It's been a great, great run and a great role, and I very much appreciated it. I wanted to take a little bit of time here, if you don't mind, and bear with me, because I wanted to state for the record at least a few of the things that the two of you have accomplished during your time here in Clackamas County. And I'll start with Chair Ludlow. Chair, you have played a leadership role in raising the awareness of our state and federal delegations to the critical need to break the gridlock along Interstate two oh five by adding an additional lane in both directions from Stafford Road to State Route ninety-nine. And your leadership role has helped to result in placing this project on the federal government's designation of the high priority corridor, which makes it exponentially more likely to receive federal funding. You are also one of the staunchest supporters and are among the staunchest supporters of a safe place located here on Red Soils Campus, which provides centralized services for survivors of domestic violence and their families. And the service has been proving to fill a critical need here in Clackamas County with total service visits this year expected to be about five percent higher over the same period last year. A total of over thirty-seven hundred individuals have received services from that. And you have served as the county's liaison to the Regional Wastewater Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee during this critical phase of selecting appropriate technology for our solids handling project, something that will guarantee the future of our economic vitality of our urban corridor here in Clackamas County, and worked through the difficult conversations about governance. Most importantly, I think, was something that happened just a little over a month ago that you played a leadership role on, and that was the work towards consolidating, you know, one ninety agreement, the Clackamas Service District Number One and Tri-City Service District into a singular entity that we know will save our ratepayers millions of dollars and enable the county to be able to do the best job possible in protecting the waters of our county and our environment. So, I also wanted to say, too, that, you know, just after I arrived here, about four months into the job, we experienced a horrific tragedy. We lost one of our employees, Grady Waxenfelter, while working on the job. And what most folks don't really know, but I do, is the quiet leadership and compassion that Chair Ludlow provided during that critical period of time for our organization. All the way through, from the day we learned about the tragedy to the negotiations with the family to try to settle issues and provide a fair settlement to the Waxenfelter family for the situation. It was, I have this memory, and it will be the memory I always keep of you, John, is standing in the hallway after we had completed those and understanding and feeling the emotion of the moment for doing what's right for the family.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you have been a driving force for the Willamette Locks and especially important in unifying local support around this important initiative. Your efforts have led to the creation of a state task force that will raise the awareness around the issue, and it has led to the unprecedented action of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to seek a final disposition study. That's the first of its kind in Corps history, a really unique accomplishment. You also recognize that many of our residents do not have health insurance who are or are underinsured, and you led the way to help the county team up with the National Association of Counties on its Live Healthy Program, and this allowed residents to enroll in a free discount program on prescription drugs and also low-cost discount programs for health and dental programs. You served on the Partners Group for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and working with Commissioner Schrader, have played an important role in securing state and federal funding for the Riverwalk. And then working with the Association of Oregon Counties, you educated members about the role of the federal government with its timberlands, drawing on your experience with the state legislature. You have coordinated a regional dialogue about affordable housing in Clackamas County. And just in the past month, you championed and orchestrated the relocation of the memorial that honors Larry Dahl, who was Clackamas County's only Medal of Honor winner, from a nondescript location at the Museum of the Oregon Territory, to be brought here, to be placed in an honored location on our Circle of Honor in the Red Soils Campus. And the event that you facilitated putting together was attended by more than two hundred persons, including the Edgerton General of Oregon and scores of past and present military from here in our county. And then I just want to say, I'm really going to miss our weekly meetings.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to sit down with you once a week and chat about the things that were going on. I very much appreciate it, how clear and specific you are always with regard to your opinion and preferences. It's always very helpful for me in engaging in conversation to have that kind of clarity and directness, and I very much appreciate that, and I'm going to miss not being able to share those times with you. So, you know, you both worked together to discontinue the levy for the Town Center Urban Renewal District and saw the distribution of funds to the overlapping taxing agencies. You took action on one of those matters today, and you were both instrumental in drafting land use regulations regarding the sale of recreational marijuana in unincorporated areas. It's a model ordinance, and of course, the main driver is to make sure that properties are protected, that the enterprise of recreational marijuana, the growing and sale of it, is conducted in a safe and non-detrimental manner to neighboring land uses and other parties. So, all of us owe a debt of gratitude for the contributions you have made, and I would like to have everyone join me in a round of applause to Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Ah, shucks. Wow, you guys. Thank you, Dawn. That was very kind of you.
Thank you very much.
If I could, too, I just want to make sure everybody knows that they are invited to a celebration of service tomorrow at four thirty in the afternoon, right here in the board meeting room, for Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time for a commissioner communication. And Martha, you still with us? Martha?
Can you hear me now?
Yep. That line isn't used anymore, you know.
We can hear you, Martha.
I just wanted to wish all of you a happy holiday. It's been a pleasure working with you for the past four years, both you and Commissioner Smith. I look forward to another four years on the commission, and I will miss you both. I think you've added quite a bit to our portfolio, and I wish you all health and happiness for the coming new year.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, first, Dawn, I'd like to thank you for reminding us of the many accomplishments that both Tudy and John have succeeded in doing. And I want to thank John and Tudy for their years of service. While we didn't always agree, we almost always found common ground. I sometimes took criticism for my comments about what a great meeting you ran and how many issues we had come to consensus on. I just want to say how thankful I am for the many good things you have done for Clackamas County, and I wish both of you well in your future endeavors. So, you know, I thought that Dawn's comments were fantastic, and I'm honored to have served with you, seriously. Dawn, in his driving up to the campus here Thursday that it snowed, was it, or maybe it was Wednesday, took an hour and a half to get out of the parking lot for some people. And I had a meeting in Portland that was not going to be canceled for any reason. Two and a half hours after I got there, a sign on the door saying the meeting was canceled. Four and a half hours later, I got home. So, I'll never do that again. I want to also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and please be safe, and I look forward to two thousand seventeen, sort of.
That's what Martha has to say about that. Thank you, Jim. Commissioner Smith?
Dawn, thank you very much. Just so you know, I loved being a county commissioner for this county. I know I've received a lot of criticism because of my persona, and what you see today is certainly not. My heart is really breaking because I love the citizens of Clackamas County, and I loved working with our employees. And you know who you are, and you know how you have helped me become successful in this job, and I couldn't have done it without any of you. Many of you are sitting in the audience today, and many of you are out listening. I'm a fourth-generation Clackamas County resident. As I've often said, and I take a lot of pride in that, because I think it's important not only to know where we have been, but where we are going because of where we have been, to know what is vital and what is important to the people who live in this county and depend on, at least in part, our county government for representing their best interests. I've tried to do that. This job has been very hard. And this particular commission accomplished many, many things in the last four years, and I have been told by the people who have been paying attention that this commission probably accomplished more in the last four years than many commissions previous, because in large part, we took on very controversial topics. And today, we had some final resolutions of votes on those. And I just want to say, I look forward to our party tomorrow, although it's going to break my heart. I am not used to that type of thing. And Dawn, thank you specifically for mentioning those things, some of which I forgot, because, you know, you get so busy, you do one thing and you move on to another thing. But thank you all. I'm only a phone call away, and I look forward to the next chapter in my life would not have been possible, would not have been possible had I not served as a county commissioner. I just want you to know that. I learned a lot, I grew a lot, and it just goes to show that, you know, what a job can do for a person. And thank you all very much for that. And I'm going to do the dog of the week. Thank you, Jim. This is Bigley. This wasn't given his name because of his size, but because of his big personality. This wasn't given his name because of his size, but because of his big personality. He is an absolute Chihuahua, the lover lap dog. He's almost a miniature athlete, too. He can play energetically and will always be close to you. He is easy to manage and always at your side. His lovely colors, brown and white, are just right. He'll have more to show you when you come see him. He's looking for a lap and a comfy home. Go and visit Bigley today. For more information about Bigley and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, five oh three, six five five, eight six two eight, or clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is rare stuff when we have applause in this chamber, I'll tell you that. Well, I just want to say, of course, it has been really a great run for four years. Our administrative staff is outstanding, have been incredibly helpful, and as well the staff that we deal with. Most of the people we see are directors and managers, et cetera, but I've had occasion in being a real estate broker separately, on my own time, to go in and to the planning and development department. And that's a place I'm pretty familiar with, and they've greatly improved their service over there. I'm very proud to see that. Fantastic service. And now they actually ask for your feedback, which is, I think, very valuable and will be very valuable in the future. But I particularly noticed the growth in that department, I appreciate that, and all of the staff that, again, outstandingly served us. My policy coordinators, Emily Klepper and Ernie Hayes, who's left as a went-to metro. So, but I appreciate those people, and certainly Mary Rathke's running of the office up there. I think it's, it was sent just this last week, a note from a lady and her husband. It says, "What do you know, a Dear John Letter? I'm not very good with words, so I'll do the best I can. Hopefully you'll understand. We are very sorry that you lost the Clackamas County Commissioner's Chair position. The loss is also for the many people who you supported over your tenure. You were an excellent commissioner. I'm sending you an item that I received a long time ago after not getting a promotion." It was written by columnist Ellen Goodman. It says it all. "There's a trick to the graceful exit. It begins with the vision to recognize when a job, a life stage, a relationship is over, and to let it go. It means leaving what's over without denying its validity or its past importance in our lives. It involves a sense of future, a belief that every exit line is an entry, that we are moving on rather than out. The trick of retiring well may be the trick of living well. It's hard to recognize that life isn't a holding action, but a process. It's hard to learn that we don't leave the best parts of ourselves behind, back in the dugout or in the office. We own what we learned back there. The experiences and the growth are grafted onto our lives. And when we exit, we can take ourselves along quite gracefully. Thank you for your service to Clackamas County. You'll always be remembered for your guidance and direction of the board. You touched many lives in a positive manner, and not many of us can say that." So she wished me and Maureen the best of future activities. Ladies and gentlemen, Merry Christmas. There being no further business before the Clackamas County Commission this day. This meeting is adjourned.